Call this meeting to order. The Rockledge City Council Regular Meeting, Wednesday, October the 17th, 2018, and it is 6:00 PM. City Clerk, you want to call the roll, please?
Mayor Price.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Ferguson.
Here.
Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilman Forrester. Councilman Daskey.
Here.
Councilman Hartzell.
Here.
Attorney Manick Leir.
Here.
City Manager Fettro.
Here.
Please stand for invocation tonight. We'll be by Councilman Daskey, and remain standing for the salute to the flag, please.
Please bow at me, if you would, please. Our Heavenly Father, we come to you in prayer tonight. We ask you to watch over these meetings and help us, the council and the mayor, make the best decisions for the citizens of Rockledge. We also ask you to watch out for our first responders. Keep them safe, get them back home to their loved ones, and watch over our military men and women, bring them home safely as well. In your name we pray, amen.
Salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Council has before them the minutes of the regular meeting, October 3rd, 2018. What's the pleasure to counsel?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on October 3rd, 2018.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify, say an aye.
Aye.
Ho, same sign. Motion carries. Presentations, there's none tonight. Financial budget report, who's going to give me the budget report?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Move to be in receipt of the financial budget report for the month of September 2018.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify, say an aye.
Aye.
Ho, same sign. Motion carries. Public hearings ordinances, resolutions. We have three public hearings tonight. First ordinance, who's going to give me the first ordinance? A.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Offer ordinance for second reading and public hearing, ordinance number 1740-2018, amending Chapter 3, Section 21-40, Rockledge Code of Ordinances as related to parking restrictions on Orange Avenue. I submit this by title only and open to a public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify, say an aye.
Aye.
Ho, same sign. Mr. City Attorney.
Ordinance number 1740-2018, an ordinance of the City of Rockledge, Bovard County, Florida, amending Chapter 3, Section 21-40S of the Rockledge Code of Ordinances to add a new subsection 3 therein, stating that enforcement of Section 21-40S 1 and 2 shall not apply for any holiday falling on a weekday, declaring that invalidity of any portion thereof shall not affect the remaining portion of this ordinance, provided for the effective date thereof and for other purposes.
At this time, I open this to the public. Is there anybody out here that'd like to speak on this particular? Sherry, do you have any cards on this?
No.
Nothing? Is there anybody that'd like to speak on this ordinance for the parking restrictions on Orange Avenue? Seeing none, close the public hearing. What's the pleasure to counsel?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Move for the adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify, say an aye.
Aye.
Ho, same sign. B ordinance, who's going to give me a second reading on this one?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I'd like to offer an ordinance, number 1741-2018, ZDA-18-02 rezoning, 7.96 acres in the vicinity of Brookview Lane from R2 to PUD, and move for the second reading of the ordinance by title only.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify, say an aye.
Aye.
Ho, same sign. Mr. City Attorney.
Ordinance number 1741-2018, an ordinance of the City of Rockledge, Bovard County, Florida, changes the zoning classification from the R2 Single Family Dwelling District to the PUD Planning Unit Development District, and the Planning District 8 of approximately 7.96 acres located at the end of Brookview Lane, east of Bayberry Lane, and at the end of Brookview Lane and west of Burrell Drive in the city of Rockledge, as more particularly described in Exhibit A of this ordinance, amending the zoning ordinance and zoning map of the city of Rockledge to reflect the change of the zoning affected by this ordinance, directing the city manager to cause the appropriate designation to be made on the face of the official city zoning map indicating that are indicating the new zoning classification of the property described in this ordinance, declaring that invalidity of any portion thereof shall not affect the remaining portion of this ordinance, provided for the effective date thereof and for other purposes.
At this time, I open this to the public. Is there anybody that'd like to be heard on the rezoning of 7.96 acres in the vicinity of Brookview Lane from R2 to PUD? Do you have any cards, Sherry?
Yes.
Okay, call the first one.
Julie Pierceall.
Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Julie Pierceall. I live at 2916 Huntington Lane in Rockledge.
I didn't hear where you said. Can you pull that closer to you?
Sorry. I was just using my teacher voice. Julie Pierceall, I live at 2916 Huntington Lane in Rockledge.
Okay.
My concern is with any new zoning that increases the total number of units in Rockledge, and this applies to this particular ordinance, this question, and C1 and C2 later tonight. I'm wondering if anybody here can answer my question about what is the current build-out in Rockledge?
The current build-out for how many houses we have to be built?
Yep. What have you already got in the books that have been approved and can be built according to city council decisions?
I don't think we have that number.
Yes. I've called and tried to find that number, and I haven't got that number.
Say that again.
I've called the city hall, and I haven't gotten an answer on that number.
I couldn't tell you how many we have built in the city.
Build-out is actually approved but not yet built.
Oh, you mean how many subdivisions that we have approved?
How many units are going up?
How many new subdivisions?
Not subdivisions, houses.
Well, that's subdivisions, too.
Because each subdivision has a different number of houses in it.
Yeah. Well, very little, I can tell you that much, because there's not a lot left to be built out. So there's very little out there that's been approved, ready to be built right now.
Well, the question that what got me involved in all of this is less than 10 acres looking at 46 new units, possibly, and I know that the properties that are under development on Martin Road and off of Barnes and then a couple of others, plus this one here, are all in excess of five acres. So if you add those four or five up, we're talking about 25, 30 more acres. If you can put 46 on 10, that's a couple hundred more houses going in.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Well, I don't know. I don't know which project you're talking about specifically. Alex, can you come forward? Maybe you can answer some of these questions.
The one we're talking about right now is the one in the vicinity of Brookview Lane.
Yep. That's about, well, it says seven acres. It's actually sort of, if I remember what I looked at the map, Brookview actually ends on one side and picks up again on the other side of the property.
Mm-hmm.
It's a woodlot. So in theory...
Alex, how many, how many is being built out on this one?
On Brookview, I believe it's 28.
You need to come to the mic, because it has to be recorded.
On Brookview, I believe that it is, the developer went back and forth, and I think we finally got to, was it 30? 28? 30? 28? 28, yep.
And by rezoning this from R2 to PUD, Chris, you might want to come forward on this, too. You probably know it off the top of your head.
Back of his hand.
And your name and, and address for the record?
Chris Gardner, 1353 Palmetto Avenue, Winter Park, Florida. This specific property is shy of eight acres. You know, through a community meeting and our planning and zoning hearing, and even in our first reading, the actually existing zoning afforded five units to the acre. We ended up with 28 units, which is about three and a half units to the acre. There were some other items in there, like buffers and some lot sizes, that were effectively negotiated during the public hearing. So I can't speak to Ms. Pierceall's exact answer, but specific to this public hearing on our ordinance, it's about three and a half units per acre.
Right. It's less, less than what it's owned for.
So 28 total units.
Yeah.
Yep. Zoning, I think, affords up to 40 units.
Right.
I'm wondering if anybody knows how many units are going up in the development that comes off of Martin Road behind the Knights of Columbus?
That's 85 units.
85 units. That's lovely. And then near Three Meadows, there's more going in? How many units have been approved there that aren't yet built?
30.
Yes, off of Barnes.
Yeah, I think we're getting off. We're on this one subject right now.
Well, that's my point.
This is a public hearing, and this public hearing is for this one particular subdivision right now? I mean, you can meet with the city manager, meet with Alex at any time during the week. They'd be more than happy to try to answer all these other questions for the subdivisions to you.
My, my concern is that taken singly, none of these subdivisions causes a problem, but Rockledge currently has at least three proposed subdivisions, one of them already in building, and we don't have the water to supply those homes 15 years from now.
That's your opinion.
No, that's the science that I went and found this weekend.
Well...
Deseret Ranch owns the Taylor Creek Reservoir.
I understand that.
We currently buy through Cocoa water from Deseret Ranch.
Mm-hmm.
They have a proposal printed up and submitted to put in 550 units on their property. It will require water from their reservoir. They are not obligated, that I know of, to sell water to Cocoa. We currently have less than a sufficient supply of water for the current population of this county as of 2030. That's with the current houses already built and being used. My question to you is, what's the plan to supply water when we run out?
It, I mean, go ahead, city manager.
I would just offer that perhaps you ought to maybe meet with the city manager at Cocoa, because I know that they have an agreement with the Deseret Ranch, and they recently, I believe it was this calendar year, got the rights to in perpetuity, not just a 30-year.
Okay. So they have the perpetuity. Will that include selling water to Rockledge at a rate that Rockledge will need if another 140 units are put in?
I mean, the Rockledge would negotiate with, the city of Cocoa would set their rates, and we would certainly work with them on that, as any other city does.
So the water rates for the residents of Rockledge would go up?
Not necessarily. I mean, I don't, we don't know that, but that's yet to be determined.
Well, if the rates go up from Cocoa, they go up for us, correct?
Of course, of course.
Less than 10%.
Less than 10% out of the city of Cocoa. Anybody receives water from Cocoa, which is county folks, Merritt Island, Cocoa Beach, Cape Canaveral, all stand to have a 10% above what citizens pay in the city of Cocoa. So, but yeah, that's just, so some of those questions we...
How many municipalities are currently buying water from Cocoa, from the Taylor?
That's a question for Cocoa, ma'am. I don't know.
I don't know where that's our, it's, it's our problem, ma'am.
Because you're building homes that people are going to want water for.
Excuse me. We're talking about this one project right now, and that's what this public record is for. So if you need to speak on this one, and if you want to talk about water with the city of Cocoa, by all means, talk to them. If you want to talk to Alex, our city manager, you're more than welcome to any time during the week. But let's, let's get back on track, and let's, this is a public record or a public hearing for this particular project right now, and there's other people out there that want to speak.
Yes, I understand all of what you have said.
Mm-hmm.
It is the job of this city council to act in the best behalf of all citizens of Rockledge.
Okay.
And taken singly, no one development alone will create a water shortage.
Well...
But you are not having a public hearing, that I am aware of, to look at the total number of homes built in Rockledge that will need water in 15 years. So I would like to know, where is the appropriate place to put together the big picture?
The city?
The city of Cocoa doesn't give a darn what Rockledge does with its housing, so speaking to Cocoa will not help me.
But the city of Cocoa supplies the water.
I called the city of Cocoa this morning.
City of Cocoa supplies the water.
Yes, and they are currently pumping 8 million gallons a day, with a maximum of 12 million gallons a day allowed to come out of the Taylor Creek Reservoir.
Mm-hmm.
If Rockledge and Cocoa and Merritt Island and Canaveral Groves and Cape Canaveral all want water from that same source and all are building, when will that maximum of 12 million gallons a day be reached?
I don't know.
And will, will Rockledge be able?
I don't know.
To supply water to 120 households?
I can't answer that question for you. I don't control that part.
Then I'm asking that we, the city council, put off decisions on new housing until you have an answer for where the water will come from.
No, we're not going to do that.
So you're not willing to look at the future of the water supply for this city?
No. We're not, we're not going to do that for you, no.
So we have it on the record, you are unwilling to look at the water supply for the city of Rockledge 15 years from now.
That's not our business. That's the city of Cocoa.
No, it's not. You buy the water from Cocoa.
And we do have, we do have concurrency that we look at on a, how many, how many year basis do we do concurrency?
It tiers.
It tiers, right. So concurrency is looked at from time to time, and that's, water is brought up during concurrency. So that's being taken care of, and that's being addressed.
Can you tell me how that's being taken care of? Because when I spoke to the city of Cocoa this morning, I was told that it's five years before they're going to begin construction on the ability to even process more water out of Taylor Creek.
Mr. City Attorney.
Mr. Mayor, the public comment on the matter is generally to make their desires known. It shouldn't be turned into a question and answer interrogation, and what it does is it gets it way off the topic.
That's what's happened.
If, you know, if...
Well, my concern is...
Ma'am, I'm trying to talk. Please give me a minute. So what, you know, the bunch of questions that are being thrown out, I doubt very seriously whether anybody in this room has the answers to her questions, and she needs to contact the city manager and anybody who wants to find out what the plan is for water, and I'm quite sure there is one.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I have been watching some of this happening, and if you remember, my comments at the end of last meeting, I mentioned something about growth of water, use of water resources in the whole state, and how impact fees may become an issue that has to be brought forward, because part of my work on the Energy, Environment, Natural Resources Board for, for Leica Cities has been looking at sourcing of water availability. Two years ago, they told us that 6% of the aquifer-based sourced water was still available for use by new construction. Last year, they told me, it was dwindling, but they didn't have a number. This year, they told me, we built it out. Now our sources are surface water and desalinization, and the price goes up for each of those. Regular aquifer water is about a quarter per thousand gallons. Then you go up for treatment and everything else. Then you go up to $3 a gallon for surface water treatment. Then you go up to $12 a gallon for osmosis water. So that's going to increase the price of water, anyway. If that is presented in the construction of homes as an impact fee, people start realizing it costs more to move to Florida, and it would start reducing the rate. Now, in talking to other people, I found out that, now I believe we just signed a census that says we have 26,700 some people in Rockledge. And two years ago, or a year ago, we had somebody from the University of Florida said that by 20, in 30 years, 15 years, that we'll have 40,000 people in Rockledge, Florida. So somewhere in there, there's a balance point, but usually, we let the market figure out what that balance point is, and you just have to give it some direction by guiding it with policies and costs.
Right.
And a lot of those need to be done at the state. We don't have all the tools in our hands to do it, and we've got arrangements with Cocoa to provide us with water, therefore, that arrangement, we can work a little bit, but it's their deal to get the water, and the state of Florida to provide us, that, all of us, the tools as a state to do the things that need doing.
Okay. Could I suggest that you do meet with the city manager or a city planner to answer the rest of your questions, because I can't answer your questions tonight.
Okay. A couple of things. Can you tell me the name of the person to whom I should speak, and when they're actually available?
The city manager's right here. She'll give you her business card.
I can't read those signs from this distance.
That's me. Brenda Fettro.
Thank you. And what I had wanted to put before the city council was that they consider delaying approval of all housing developments until there is an answer about how much water will be available 15, 25, 30 years down the road.
Okay. Thank you very much, then. Any other cards?
Not for this item.
Anybody else that'd like to speak on this particular subdivision? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. What's the pleasure to counsel?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I move for the adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify, say an aye.
Aye.
Ho, same sign. Motion carries. C ordinance, second reading, public hearing. Who's going to give me this one?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Offer an ordinance for second reading and public hearing, ordinance number 1742-2018, ZDA-18-03, rezoning .70 acres of undeveloped property located at 150 Ister Boulevard from M1 to RMU, and I ask that this be read by title only and open up to the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor signify, say an aye.
Aye.
Ho, same sign. Mr. City Attorney.
Ordinance number 1742-2018, an ordinance of the City of Rockledge, Bovard County, Florida, changes zoning classification from the M1 General Industrial District to the RMU Redevelopment Mixed Use District, and the Planning District 5 of approximately .70 acres located at 150 Ister Boulevard in the city of Rockledge, as more particularly described in the body of this ordinance, amending the zoning ordinance and zoning map of the city of Rockledge to reflect the change of zoning affected by this ordinance, directing the city manager to cause the appropriate designation to be made on the face of the official city zoning map indicating the new zoning classification of the property described in this ordinance, declaring that invalidity of any portion thereof shall not affect the remaining portion of this ordinance, provided for the effective date thereof and for other purposes.
At this time, this is open to the public. Anybody that'd like to speak on the rezoning of .7 of an acre undeveloped property located at 150 Ister Boulevard from M1 to RMU? Is there anybody that'd like to speak on this? Do you have any cards on this?
Just a sec.
On the same?
Yes.
Did you want to speak on this one?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else that'd like to speak on this rezoning? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. What's the pleasure to counsel?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Move for the adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify, say an aye.
Aye.
Ho, same sign. Motion carries. Move on. Eight reports from boards and committees.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I move to be in receipt of the following minutes, the Business Development Committee, minutes of the meetings on September 25th, 2018, Community Redevelopment Agency Board of Commissioners, minutes of meetings on September 26th, 2018, and Planning Commission, minutes of meeting on October 2nd, 2018, and to consider independently in the recommendations contained therein.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify, say an aye.
Aye.
Ho, same sign. Motion carries. Let's go to A, Business Development, no recommendation. B, Community Redevelopment Agency, no recommendation.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I do have a concern, or suggestion, with regard to the Business Development Committee Minutes.
A, yes.
Yes, sir. Under Section D, the reports, page 57 of our packet, Darren Gibson had several questions about a variety of different topics. Discussion followed. I think, I'd like to suggest that those, at least those topics in the future be specified in our minutes. I think that's pretty vague, and to not have any record of what those variety of different topics were, I would just like to make a suggestion in the future that the minutes reflect what the topics are.
You're talking about under discussion down here?
Under, under discussion. A committee member, Darrell Gibson, had several questions about a variety of different topics.
Were you there, Brenda?
I was, ma'am. I can share with the council what they were. They were what appeared to be a little unrelated to the Business Development Committee. That's why it was generalized. One was about the Valencia Dock, and then the other was about, he and his travels found cards at rest stops in North Florida that had a Rockledge business on it, and he just wondered how they got there. So we, we tried to answer his questions as best we could, but it just seemed, anyway, but we can certainly do that, councilwoman, but it just seemed a little unrelated to the Business Development Committee. That's why it was a little more generally stated, but I certainly hear your feedback.
Thank you. In any committee meeting.
Sure.
Thank you.
More specific on your minutes, and that's what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The Planning Commission, minutes of meeting, October 2nd, recommendation, approval of conceptual site plan, Shell Harbor Older Adult Living Facility, 2855 Morrell Road. Alex? You have cards, too? Okay, let's, Alex, give a presentation first.
So this potential development is on the corner of Sable Grove and Morrell Road. It's a little over eight acres, and they, the applicant is looking to build an independent living facility that is about 130 units. So the site plan went before Planning Commission on the 2nd with the recommendation for approval to you all tonight.
Okay. Anybody have any questions of Alex? Okay. Your first card.
I have Bob Lewis. I have Rick Curran.
Rick Curran.
Hi, I'm Rick Curran, 5963 Stillwater Avenue, Cocoa, Florida.
Bring it up a little bit, Rick.
We, sorry.
Okay.
Let's see, the, the item before you is the Shell Harbor Independent Living Facility, and it's, it's a project that we brought to you previously about eight years ago, I believe it was, and was approved back then, and it's for a independent living facility. It's not a assisted living facility, and it should be a very, a very good asset for the city. And I have with me tonight also Bob Lewis, who's, who's with the owner, Cameron, General Contractors, so he can describe the facility in more detail for you. And afterwards, if you have any questions for me, or if, if, if any, if any of the ordinance has any questions, I'll be happy to try and answer those as well.
Okay. Bob, your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Bob Lewis, Director of Development, Cameron General Contractors, 7101 South 82nd Street, Lincoln, Nebraska. What, what we have here is a 130-unit independent living community. We have owned the property since 2008. We chose at that time not to build on it. We currently own and operate 24 independent living communities around the U.S. We are the builder-owner-operator of all of these communities. We currently have three up and running in Florida, and we're working on another five in the area. So this is a highly amenitized independent living community, 130 units, 128 rentable, an all-inclusive, single monthly rent, gets the residents three meals a day, concierge Concierge service, valet parking, full-time shuttle bus. We have a full-time fitness and activities director. We'll have a live-in manager couple. We will have a hundred and fifty-seat state-of-the-art theater in the building. We'll offer, we have a fitness center in the building. We also have some third-party vendors that will offer some services exclusively to the residents. Beauty salon, barber, gift shop, pharmacy drop-off, and potentially a bank. Again, it's all-inclusive, one monthly rent. Oh, and included in that is housekeeping and maintenance also. So again, what we've got, what we'd like to do is get approval tonight for our hundred and thirty unit independent living community and be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Anybody in, any other cards? Nick Rayhall? No. Anybody else? Okay. Anybody from the council have any questions of Alex or the engineer of record or the owner? Everybody's had an opportunity to look at this. What is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. Chair. I would like, before we move forward, to look at the concerns in the Planning Commission Minutes with regard to this facility. They're on page sixty-three of our packet. The storm surge and drainage compliance. Also, the easement and traffic control. Doesn't look like these issues have been addressed.
Well, I think they are addressed under concurrency. Come on up, Alex.
Those items are all addressed under staff review and under concurrency and going through the process. What we're looking for council to do is approve the units and the concept of the plan being at that location. We, at the staff level, do make sure that they have Saint John's permit, make sure that they have their gopher tortoise stuff. If there's any gopher tortoises, make sure that they don't exceed their unit size. Do traffic concurrency. There's like twenty different steps that we go through.
Thank you.
But I can bring you all of that, but...
And that's, this is a, not assisted living, but independent living. It's very little traffic, very... I was just talking to the man right before the meeting. Only about half of the people have cars. So, there'd be a lot more parking out there than, that the city requires and there will be cars, for sure.
Okay, so staff will, you said you've got about twenty items that they must comply with, so...
Yes.
You can go through that with Alex at any time, but there's full...
Thank you.
Full concurrency. All these projects go through full concurrency first.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Being that those were noted in their meeting is the reason I brought it to our attention.
Okay. Anybody else? It's a pleasure to counsel.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Move to approve the recommendation.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Appointments and reappointments. Oh, you got one more?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Recommendation: Approval of ZDA eighteen oh four Rockledge Church of Christ. Rezoning from R-two to R-two A. Alex?
Hi. This is ten acres off of Huntington Lane and it is currently owned by the Rockledge Church of Christ. They are working in partnership with Chris Gardner and Nick Rayhall to look at rezoning the property and that would have a binding site plan with it for forty-six single-family homes. So, for a period of generally two years is what we...
What's the maximum they could put on the property?
I want to say it was eighty, I think we figured out. It was something crazy that was just, Nick's gonna come up and talk.
Name and address for the record, please.
I'm Nick Rayhall, twelve sixty-nine U.S. Highway One, Rockledge, Florida. It's currently zoned R-two, which is five units an acre times ten acres. That's basically fifty units, or fifty units. We are proposing forty-six units. The reason we're asking for the smaller lots is we wanted to enlarge our retention area so that the grade difference between the surrounding properties would be more commensurate. If we tried to build bigger lots, we'd have to raise the site so high we'd end up with retaining walls everywhere. We also think it's a reasonable transition from the multifamily. And I think at the previous meeting, the biggest concern was traffic. And we agreed to do a traffic study. And if the road is shown to be beyond its capacity with this new development, we will not develop.
So, has that been done yet?
We were waiting for the rezoning approval first.
Okay.
Got the engineers here if you have any questions.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? So they still, once, if this is approved tonight, they will still have to do a traffic study for concurrency?
Yeah, I should say we are, would be under a binding development plan. And obviously, the sewer, the water, storm water would all have to meet concurrency.
We still also have to go through the plating process. So this will come back before you as you go, as they go through... Right, exactly. For site plan and plating and all of that. So, you'll, this will not be the last time you see it.
Okay. It's a pleasure to counsel.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I make a motion that we approve said zoning request.
Second.
We have a second, motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Now we go to reappointments and appointments. There's no reappointments. And we do have an appointment. Community Redevelopment Agency Board of Commissioners. We have two, but one has, the city clerk just told me at the start of meeting that Laura Corbin has withdrawn. Is Laura Corbin in the audience? Okay. So we only have William Ellis. So, go ahead. Who's ever gonna give me this?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I move to appoint William Ellis, by acclamation, to the Community Redevelopment Agency Board of Commissioners.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Is Mr. Ellis, William Ellis, in the audience? Okay. And Rockledge Environmental Enhancement Tree Board. Who's gonna give me this one?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I move to appoint Adam Copenhaver, by acclamation, to the Rockledge Environmental Enhancement Tree Board.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Is Adam Copenhaver in the audience? Okay. Unfinished business, let's move on. Action item: Authorization to Utilize Owner-Direct Purchasing Process for Construction of Civic Hub. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, as you all know, we have two major projects going on right now. The fire station and the civic hub directly to our east. You all had approved the guaranteed maximum price and the utilization of the ODP process for the fire station. And you have approved the GMP for the civic hub project. However, I have not asked for your consideration on the ODP process officially for the civic hub. So this is asking for your consideration to authorize me to use the ODP process. And as we, I had shared with you at another meeting, the W&amp;J Construction, they use their vetting process of the subs, getting the lowest and best price. And we would take advantage of that, their utilization of that process. But it would enable us to save a lot of tax dollars and thus save the city money by using the ODP process. It's back to you, Mayor.
Anybody have any questions of the city manager? We did the same thing at the fires, new fire station, a couple of weeks ago, if everybody remembers that.
Absolutely.
So, it's a pleasure to counsel.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Move to approve the utilization of the Owner-Direct Purchasing Process for Construction of the Civic Hub.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Consent business, number ten. I'm pulling from consent. B. Evaluation of Bio-Solids. So I'm looking for approval of A, C, and D. Mr. Dasky?
Yes, sir. Move for approval of these consent business items. A is replenishment of funds for the SCU Confidential Investigations for Public Safety Department. C. Approval of addition of the Devare Level Transducers for nine lift stations for the wastewater treatment. And D is the approval for the acceptance of grant award for the FDEP for Gus Hip Canal Denitrification Planning Division.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. This is consent business. There is no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. All right, let's talk about B, Approval of Evaluation of Bio-Solids Treatment Process. I think everybody received an email. Several. From a certain citizen about her concern on the bio-solids. Me and the city manager met with the citizen at four o'clock today and she brought two other individuals in a meeting that were part of the Indian River Lagoon Coalition. And we discussed what our intent was here was to do an evaluation study only on what to do with our bio-solids. And the reason being is, right now, we take our bio-solids to the dump and they utilize them at the dump. But if the state in the future decides that you can no longer take your bio-solids to the dump, what are we gonna do with them? So that's, one of the biggest purposes of this study here is not only to possibly upgrade our bio-solids to a category B, I think it is, instead of a C, what it is right now. But it's to figure out a plan B in case the state of Florida decides that you cannot take this to the dump any longer. And they understood what we were doing now and they were okay with everything, this group. And they're gonna stay in contact with the city manager and our Director of Wastewater and work with them with our study and decide how we're going to move forward with this. I think the study is gonna take two to four months, is what they were saying. So we'll know more after the first of the year about what to do with these bio-solids in the future. Anybody have any questions on that? So, now that we've answered that question and we've answered the question to the... Is there anybody out there who want to speak on this? You didn't have any cards on that? Okay. So, what's basically the, anybody in the council have any questions? If not, I'm looking to move forward with this, with this evaluation. And it's already been budgeted. It was budgeted during the summer for this year. And I think we're ready to move forward with this, if the council's ready. So, I'm looking for what's a pleasure to counsel.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the evaluation, the bio-solids treatment process.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any further discussion?
Call for a question.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. New business. Action item. Group Health Insurance Recommendation. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. So Mayor and council, as we talked during the summer with the budget process, our health insurance renewal was up for negotiations. And I'm pleased to tell you that our renewal came in at four percent. And we do have Sean with the Garing Group, our insurance broker, here in the audience if you should have any questions of him. Thank you for coming, Sean. But we are pleased that it is only a four percent increase. Other cities in this county, some of those rates started at a thirty percent increase and got negotiated down to still double digits of about twelve to thirteen percent of an increase. So, we believe we are doing reasonably well to keep our costs as controlled as we can. We believe the clinic is helping with that effort. So that is before you for renewal. Additionally, the dental and life insurance plan benefits have one more year on those contracts, if you will. And there is no increase in those for this upcoming year.
Okay. Everybody understand what we're doing here? For those of you in the audience, when I first came on this council in nineteen ninety-nine, we spent one million dollars a year for health insurance for our employees. Today, we're spending two point eight million. That's almost two hundred percent increase in less than twenty years. So, it's very expensive to have health insurance and our employees pay a percentage as well. And they're actually getting an increase this year, a percentage they have to pay. So health insurance is not something we take lightly and it's something that's very expensive for the City of Rockledge. Say, what's the pleasure to counsel?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I do consider this being a very moderate rate, knowing where this car is going. So I'd therefore make a motion that we approve this action request of insurance as presented by the city manager and the Finance Division.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Pertitions, Remontations, and Communications at this time. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to your city council about anything to do with the City of Rockledge? You got a card? Sure. I didn't hear that. I guess they heard it. Come on up.
Stuart and Susan Truszkowski.
I think she butchered that name. Okay. Name and address for the record.
Stuart and Susan Truszkowski, eighteen oh one Live Oak Drive, north in Rockledge.
Can you put that mic up just a little bit? Okay. Go ahead.
Manager Fettro is aware of our circumstances and if the council had opportunity to see that we emailed last week. We have a water retention problem. Our culvert in front of our property, apparently after thirty years, is given way. We understood from Mr. Anderson at the Utilities Department that it was homeowner responsibility to take care of. However, the more we looked into it, we found ourselves not finding answers that showed us it was our responsibility. The area, as we measured it, was a good ten feet into the publicly dedicated area the City of Rockledge has. We've come to you this evening just to ask, might the council be willing to please take this as a matter that you would help us to investigate? We're not asking for a decision tonight. But when we looked at even the City of Rockledge's website, it pointed us to a link that discussed Saint John's Water Management District responsibilities. And even there, it told us that when those elements of water drainage are in the public right of way, it falls to the City of Rockledge. We are hopeful that you will please allow us the benefit of your wisdom in helping us to research this.
Uh huh. I'm aware of your situation. I've talked to the city manager about it. I even drove by and looked at your, at your problem that you have at your house the other day with the city manager. City Attorney, are you aware of this too? I think you are.
I have. I've spoken with the petitioner on two occasions. Also met with the city manager, Mr. Poole, and Alex, the Plans Director, discussed it. Ken probably has the most corporate knowledge on it as to how the drainage was set up and how it functioned. And he could probably explain it a lot.
From what I understand, that the culvert is your responsibility. As all homeowners in there, we've never replaced a culvert in Timbers West for anybody. There's been several failures in there. And you can tell where people have replaced their culverts by cutting the concrete and there's new concrete out there and a new culverts. Unfortunately, in Florida, when the culverts sit in the water, they do rot out over a period of time and that's what's happened to you.
I think Irma helped to speed that along for us all.
But we've never replaced a culvert for anybody in Timbers West.
Is there...
Mr. Mayor, what it was is the development was designed, and it's an old development, with swales and ditches that ran throughout. That was the drainage. When they began to develop the property, and Mr. Poole can correct me if I say something incorrect. When the builder would go to pull the permit, they would have to continue the ditch with the culvert. That's what the pipe was for. And so the developer would put the pipe in and get his permit and would build. Over the years, those have, some of them have failed. And those, but those were put in by the homeowner to attempt to get it done. If not, they wouldn't, they'd have a nice big dip in their driveway when they tried to drive in because they would not be able to block the drainage for the whole facility.
Saying anything incorrect? No? Surprising. Have you talked to Ken Poole as well?
No, sir. I've spoken with...
With our city attorney?
The rationale I was offered by Mr. Minnichlear was that the Rockledge felt that the problem led within our lot. And from our observation and inspection and measurement, the entirety of the problem starts, continues, and completes more than ten feet outside of the front of our property. It never touches our property at all.
Ken, you want to come forward?
And we reviewed the Building Department file that Manager Fettro's secretary helped to pull. It was quite an old file. And there was nothing in that site plan about adding that in. It was not done during the construction. So we thought perhaps it had been done at a time of subdivision development and because the plat dedication included City of Rockledge receiving rights and responsibilities to publicly dedicated common areas, rights of way, and for maintenance of utilities.
Let's let Ken Poole talk.
Yes, sir.
Ken, you want name and address for the record?
Fourteen hundred Garden Road, Rockledge. The development here, for lack of better term, swells that are a little bit deeper than swells. They take about an eighteen-inch pipe for each driveway. The undeveloped lots, there's still a few out there. If they come in to pull a permit to build a home, the driveway is included in that permit along with the culvert that goes underneath the driveway to continue the flow of drainage alongside the road. And it takes it to the north through a piping system out to West Barton eventually. And to the north, it goes out the Falk Canal eventually. At each end of the cul-de-sacs, the three cul-de-sacs in Timbers West that come off of Timbers West Boulevard. So, back in the nineties, I did a lot of home inspections out there. The developer would shoot the lot grade and it would be off of the Health Department's elevation for the septic tank. They would... They would establish that elevation, establish the elevation for the home, so it would drain to that point, and the same developer would set out two stakes by the road to give the elevation for the pipe that went in the place of the driveway. The city, as far as my department looks at it, if the home was not developed, there would be no need for a driveway. There'd be no need for a culvert. So all of this is all pulled at the same time, at the same permit, and has been, in the past that I know, the responsibility of the homeowner.
Now, if they decided they didn't want to put a culvert in, could they dip their concrete in this, with the swell?
We probably, I don't think they could get in and out of their driveway.
Be too steep?
Be too steep. Because the pipe is 18-inch.
Right.
Equivalent. It's an.
Because originally, those were not supposed to be ditches. Those were supposed to be swells.
Well, they, they have been, it's pretty well to what design was.
Really?
Yeah, because they had to meet the inverts of the pipe. And the inverts of those pipes many times during the year are underwater because of the water table.
Right. Water table's so high.
Yes.
Okay. City manager, did you want to speak?
No, I went out and looked at it after speaking with Mrs. Truskowski, excuse me if I don't get it right, probably 30, 60 days ago. I don't remember now exactly when, but anyway, chatted with her and went out personally.
August 31st.
Okay, thank you. Went out and looked at it personally as well, and it, the pipe underneath their driveway, assuming that's the correct pipe that you're referencing, is the one that, that I saw that underneath their driveway appeared to be failing as well. And that driveway is on their private property, so that's why I rendered my decision that I believed it was the responsibility of the homeowner. Anyway, so that opinion respectfully still stands, but back to you, Mayor.
Well, I, I know in Beavard County, when, when you have a culvert going to your property, that the culvert is your responsibility, whether it's on the city's property or not, because you got permission to put that culvert in when you built that house.
Even though it wasn't part of.
And so the culvert is always your responsibility to upkeep your culvert.
I appreciate the education. I'm trying to go to this place. May I ask a question then? Why did Stormwater Utilities tamper with it?
Why does what?
Why did Stormwater Utilities take some action on our property? We, we thought it was, as you can tell, we.
I have no idea what you're saying or talking about. I can't hardly hear you, first of all.
What, what happened was is that the city came and dumped several hundred pounds of dirt and filled in the void that was underneath the driveway without our permission or foreknowledge. So after stating that it wasn't the city's responsibility, they took some sort of action, which really is obviously not corrective since it doesn't repair the pipe, nor does it help support the driveway.
Ken's going to have to speak to that, if you know what they're talking about, Ken.
Yes, we received calls for maintenance of the right-of-way, and it's a safety issue. And this, this particular pipe is in the cul-de-sac. And when the developer developed this property, this is where it's at the end of the cul-de-sac that it runs to the north and goes towards the church, and then is piped out to West Barton Ditch eventually. The city, as the development took place, we piped the ditch that goes.
To the north.
To the north, between the lots, which we have 15 feet of easement, seven and a half on each side, and we put a catch basin box there. The developer had run a pipe to that open ditch, so what we had done was tied that, those two driveway pipes, the neighbors that are to the west, northwest, into that box, and we filled in that area because it was open ditch. We could no longer maintain it as they built houses. So we made the situation a lot better, a lot more usable. It's, it's able to be mowed now. But in that cul-de-sac, past the, in between the two driveways, there was a hole that developed because the pipe had a hole in it and it was sucking the dirt. So we did fill the hole in as a temporary measure for safety.
Okay. And that hole was caused by their culvert?
Yes.
Okay.
But not directly underneath the driveway. Well, there was some of that, but there was, there was a hole there, so I'm, you know, if, I wasn't there, but I was told that they filled in the safety features. I did see that.
This was a photograph. Is that what you're speaking about?
That goes to the north. There's a pipe that goes between your lot and your neighbor's lot.
I think that's what led to our increased belief that it did not appear to be our responsibility as a homeowner, that the department did begin to take.
Ken, let me ask you a question. That pipe that goes to the north between the lots, is that the city's responsibility?
That is the city's responsibility, and it is a poly pipe.
Right. So that's a great pipe, but, so the culvert pipe we're saying, the city is saying is your responsibility.
Correct. It connects into the seven and a half foot easement.
Right.
Unfortunately, we were not able to view this cul, the pipe is called a culvert?
Culvert.
Under the driveway as a deteriorated pipe. What my husband knows was, oh gosh, our, he said, you could put a family of four in there, which I believe I told Ms. Fetter, it was cavernous. It was Mr. Anderson who, after he visited the property, filled it all in. Apparently, he took some photographs as well, called back and said, this is what I've done. He says, oh yeah, that pipe's deteriorating, you're going to have to have it replaced. And I said, oh boy. I said, my husband would be very interested in those photographs, sir. He said, I'm going away for Labor Day weekend, and I'll be back. And the following week, he said those pictures had been lost when cell phones were updated. So we have no direct knowledge to tell you it is a deteriorated pipe, and now we have an obstruction to even, I'm not sure what we do.
I, I think you replace your culvert pipe. What's going to happen is your driveway's going to cave in soon.
We, we won't haul a car on it in fear that that is.
You're smart. You're smart.
Maybe not so, but just not stupid.
Okay. So basically, the contention you heard from us, from the city attorney, our city manager, our, our public works director, is the culvert pipe in Timbers, Timbers West is the responsibility of the owners. And a lot of people have replaced their culverts in there already because it, they do rot out.
That doesn't tell me anything. I, I have found that oftentimes, people will not make themselves aware of.
Right.
Procedural appropriateness. But everything, I don't see anything in, in any public record or any private records that tell us it's anything but city of Rockledge's responsibility, and I've had Stormwater Department on it.
When you go look at the permit that was pulled to build your house, the culvert was put in by your builder.
We have the file. There was nothing in there about it. Like I say, sir, this area that Mr. Poole is giving technical expertise regarding is 10 feet away.
But it's your driveway, too. It's your concrete driveway that goes out to the road. When you were given a permit to build a house, you were also given the permission to connect into the street with your concrete driveway, and to do that, you had to put a culvert in to go through the swell system.
You say you, but we have the file, sir, and it was not part of that entirety.
Believe me, it's part of the file. I built a lot of houses in Timbers West, and you have to, you have to put the culvert in, and you have to put the concrete driveway in. The builder does. The city won't put your driveway in, and they won't put the culvert in.
Nor will it maintain it 30 years later.
It's the responsibility of the builder, the owner, to put a culvert in and to run the concrete right to the street.
We thank the council for their time this evening. We accept your.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I said, we, we thank you for your time this evening, apparently.
Thank you. Hopefully, we answered your question.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very appreciated.
Anybody else out here would like to speak to your city council about anything to do with the city of Rockledge? Seeing none, let's move on. Report, city manager reports.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two quick items for council. One is, please let me know if any of you are interested in riding the fire truck on October 31st to pass out Halloween candy. So please let me know if you can by the end of the week. And secondly, I will be out of town next Thursday and Friday and through the weekend. So Thursday, October 25th through Sunday, October 28th. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. City Attorney litigation report. Who's going to give me this?
Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
I am in receipt of our litigation report from our city attorney.
October 2018. Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
We have a couple of seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. City attorney? We still have two cases?
Yes, sir. No change as of yet. The one, that was my old friend, Lockwood versus Watson, trying to get that ready to deliver for the summary judgment. At least a pardon. The pardon case, league is handling that, and they give me no other information.
Okay. Thank you. Reports from Dais, city clerk? Councilman Hartzell?
Pass.
Councilwoman Martin?
I did attend the elected municipal officials' training in Tampa a couple of weeks ago and found out there are some places in Florida that I have never heard of. Fanny Springs, and Indian Town now is incorporated and has a city council. They had about four, five council persons there.
Very excited people.
And make twice as much as we do, and I think the population is about 2,000.
You know what? The only thing I know about Indian Town, when the Florida lottery came out, I don't know if it was in the 80s or not, that was the first lottery hit was Indian Town, Florida. They won the lottery, whoever it was.
Wow.
The first Florida lottery hit.
So they had about four council persons there, or elected officials there. I think our class had about 42 individuals. Very informative. Sop Chapi. Does anybody know where Sop Chapi is?
No.
Okay, I'm still doing my homework, researching where some of these places are. Indian Rocks Beach, and it was good to see some folk there from Donella. My dad was born and raised in Chiflin, and, which is just north of Donella, so, and Gretna. Gretna is, I think, north of Tallahassee, so I think I'm pretty ethical now that I've attended the training, and thank you, council, for approval. And that's all I have.
On your last class you had with the, the Police Community Academy, didn't you get TASER?
No, sir. Actually, that was, I was in Tampa for, for ethics training.
So they're going to make up with you this Thursday?
No, sir.
You sure?
I'm positive.
Okay.
I will be reta, I will make up that class next year. Thank you.
Dr. Smith?
I pass, Mr. Chairman.
Dr. Ferguson?
No, sir. I pass.
Councilman Daskey?
I pass.
Okay, all I have is for you is, our next meeting and, and starts November, our winter attire will start in November, and I'm sure that doesn't make much difference to Frank, who's not here, but still, let all of you know for your information.
I hope they'll be cooler.
Yeah. And I have nothing else for this council. I adjourn at 7:04 P.M.